I would like to call to order the November twelfth regular board meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first item of business is one dot two. At your places, you will see a copy of an amended agenda. It has been recommended that we consolidate the consent agenda and move item three dot five to a future agenda. If there are no other changes this evening, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to section two dot one, student representative reports. And from Irondale, we have Sydney Martinson-Holt. And then from Moundsview, we have Kanomu Gustafson.
Looks like we're getting our presentation pulled up here.
Yes, we are.
Oh, there it is. All right, perfect. So I'll be giving a short overview of what we did this October and some brief plans for November. So at the beginning of October, we sent a couple of student council volunteers downtown to participate in the Twin Cities Marathon, and they worked with about, I think, 5,000 other volunteers in this program, and they worked with runners and passed out a lot of drinks at the food station. And for a new event we had, I believe, happened on the twenty-sixth, we did Powder Puff Football for the first time. So it was a community building activity. We had all girls participate. We had grade level teams, and we even had, like, student council members make different T-shirts for each grade. So for example, seniors was pink and juniors green and so on. And we had concession and sign-making committees for that. So we had, I think, twenty-one volunteers show up to that, so it was a success. And then for Halloween, we had about thirty volunteers pass out candy to students in the commons before school started. And this past weekend, as you know, we had Moundsview Theater's Pride and Prejudice Fall Play, which took fourth and seventh to the tenth. We had several student council members participate, so we'd like to notice Natavia Griffin, who's a senior, and George O'Brien, who is a freshman. And for senior class shirts, we actually created, I believe, four designs, and we had our senior class officers from student council design them. And students voted on this back in September. We finally received the results, and we decided on design. And we'll be distributing these within the next two months, and students will wear these shirts for yearbook photo in the spring. And then as for November, we're planning on doing a student council social. So we are planning on sending roughly thirty volunteers to Feed My Serving Children in Coon Rapids. And as in past years, we're repeating the DECA Food Drive, which is taking place next week. So we are working with the DECA Executive Board, and we're collecting a lot of student volunteers to go to classrooms, collect food donations, and monetary donations. And all proceeds will go to the Ralph Reader Food Shelf. And then this November, we'll also be participating with our school's National Honor Society Chapter, which I believe has, like, two hundred and fifty members. So we're trying to get a large group of volunteers to go to Meals on Wheels in Roseville, which we're working to provide people who do not have access to food and also elderly people with food. And we're also planning December activities, so fun activities like Candy Cane Grams and our annual toy drive. We'll be working with Operation Joy Toy. And again, all proceeds will go to the Ralph Reader Food Shelf. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Irondale?
Um, yes. Oh, yes. Okay. Okay, so we just have a few things to share about what's been going on at Irondale recently. So first up, a few weekends ago, or I think two weekends ago, we had the SpongeBob Musical, which had a lovely performance by our drama, like, team. Yeah, we had great turnout to that, and it was a really good musical. And then also, student council put together trick-or-canning. So we partnered with NHS for this and dropped off, like, bags and flyers asking people for donations, so to give to the Ralph Reader Food Shelf. And then we, on a second weekend, came to pick up the food, and that was also a big success. And then we had trunk or treat to celebrate Halloween for the little kids in the Moundsview School District. We had a bunch of clubs from Irondale that were, like, partnered with us, so it was a super fun event, and we had good turnout for that, too.
Okay, next, we have girls' basketball. This month, our girls' basketball team is starting their 2024-2025 season. And yeah, we're just super excited to support our Irondale Knights. And then we also had speech start off their season last week with their first meeting of the year. We've got speakers ranging from various categories, all the categories, from exempt speaking to oratory to discussion, which I participate in. And our speakers are very excited to compete again this year and just keep bringing more gold home to Irondale. And then we also, lastly, we had a blood drive. I think it was last week, Irondale NHS students hosted a blood drive in the gym, and it was a very successful turnout. So yeah. And that's it.
Well, thank you, Irondale. Thank you, Moundsview Student Representatives, for being here tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, or you're free to go. So whatever you choose.
We know you're busy.
Yes, we know you're very busy. Correct. And then it looks like we have student recognition, national merit semifinalists and scholars. And it looks like Principal Rob Reitz from Moundsview High School will introduce.
That I will. Thank you so much for having me. I know we're here to recognize students, but I just, I want to extend my thank you to the board. I have seen you guys at so many events. It's so validating to see you come and celebrate the things our kids achieve, the victories, the plays, the fundraisers. You're at so many things, and I really do appreciate it. But tonight, we're going to talk about some pretty impressive students. So I'm here on behalf of Vichai Saifong, Principal at Irondale High School, and obviously the students at Irondale and Moundsview who have earned this really prestigious honor. So I'm going to introduce sixteen commended national merit scholars to you via our slide deck. And then I'm going to introduce, or have three of our national merit semifinalists introduce themselves to you. But I just want to provide a little bit of context for you about what really these students have achieved. So about 1.5 million students each year take the PISA. And less than sixteen thousand of them nationwide score high enough on that exam to receive this honor. That's about 1% of students across the United States. And we've got three national merit semifinalists and sixteen commended national merit semifinalists. This is something I think that our district recognizes annually, because annually, we have students achieve this. I'm impressed by what they do. I'm impressed by the opportunities that our teachers afford them. And I think it's a great honor that you invite them here tonight. So if I could, I want to read the names of our sixteen commended scholars to you, starting with Ben Arnold, Ranari Kim Bu Yakin, Sing Yude Chowdery, Alec Corey, Kyle Dalbo, Victoria Farmer, Gillian Hofer, James Isaacson, Isaac Johnson, Michael Kivinen, Greta Lundstad, Emily Renn, Greta Seifarth, Shou Yu Shi, Hannah Song, Graham Tebby, Si Trunifels, and Amaris Tu. And then I want to allow our three national merit semifinalists who are here tonight to come on up to the podium and introduce themselves. They're back there.
They're studying.
We had a very small ceremony for these guys with their parents. They all introduced a teacher that had made a difference in their lives. It's like, you know, tears start flowing for everyone in the room because they're so grateful, and the teachers are so grateful. So it's really nice that we get an opportunity just to have them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Isabel Lee.
My name is Rahi Kin.
And I'm Isabella Kunk, and we just wanted to thank you guys for inviting us, and we're very happy to be here.
Well, thank you.
Yes, congratulations. So quick question. If you have any plans after graduation, would you like to share? As of right now?
Um, okay, so I hope to study journalism, and I'm working on the Viewer, and I love it a lot.
That's great.
I'm hoping to major in microbiology.
Excellent.
Great.
Um, I'm hoping to attend a four-year college, and I'm not entirely sure what I want to major in, but I'm interested in the social sciences as well as, like, media.
Very cool.
Amazing.
Well, congratulations again. What an honor, and so thankful that you could all be here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting night with all of the students that are here from both Irondale and Moundsview to talk about the fall sports season. We're going to start with Chris Fink, and he's going to introduce some of his athletes.
Good evening. We had a great fall season just came to an end. We have two groups of student athletes in groups that are going to present tonight. We had one group. She texted me, said she had a big test. She's going to come.
School first. They're student athletes. That's all right.
Yeah, the student first, which is always commendable. But so I'm going to let these kids take over, and they're going to talk about their seasons. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tenzin, and this is...
I'm Amelia.
And we are members of Irondale High School Swim and Dive. So one thing that's great about this team is we all work together, and we put all of our efforts. We worked really hard this season, and all of our hard work really paid off. So like, we all, like, got our best times at every meet, and won some of our tough swim meets.
Another thing that's so great about, like, that I love about this team is our team event. We do a cabin weekend before the season starts, which is always great for, like, team bonding. We do a lot of captains' practices, so all get to know each other. And then we also have a lot of team meals that we do together. So that's, kind of helps us all get closer together. And then the other thing I love about this team is how inclusive we are. It doesn't matter, like, if you can swim or not. You could have never swam before, and you can always join the team. We had a girl with Down syndrome this year join. It was great. Everybody loved her. I don't know, we had a great time. And the other thing is, like, our JV and varsity is also so connected. Like, it's one team. Some people, some teams, I feel like it's like two cliques. Like, JV's, like, fine, and then, like, varsity's, like, you have to be, like, cool to be in varsity. But like, our team, nothing like that. We all talk to each other. We all talk about our days together. So we're super inclusive. We all hang out together, and it's a great time.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Justin, and I'm a senior at Moundsview High School.
Hi, my name is Karina. I'm a sophomore at Irondale High School.
We're two of the three drum majors at the Irondale Marching Band, so that means we're the ones conducting the band during rehearsals and running the practices. And you'll see us on top of the podiums most of the time, and you'll see us waving our hands, giving tempo.
And our band consists of a hundred and fifty students that are from Moundsview High School, Irondale High School, and St. Anthony High School. And the hundred and fifty students, we have drum line, which consists of snares, quads, toms, and bass drums. And we have the horn line, which consists of brass instruments and woodwind instruments. And also the color guard, which dances around with their, in their choreography with flags, rifles, and... This year, our show was called Composition Number Twenty-four in red, yellow, and blue. And our show was based off a artist named Jet Mondrin. Hopefully, I'm seeing that right. He was a famous Dutch artist, best known for his abstract art that had squares, rectangles, and lines.
Yeah, so our band this year won first place at Youth and Musics at US Bank Stadium. So we won first place in Class Three A. So now we're four times back-to-back state champion. Then we also competed at BOA Super Regionals, which happened at Lucas Oil in Indianapolis, and we got fifth place in our class. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jim Galvin, Activities Director at Moundsview High School. We've, we're off to a great fall season. Our music department, as you know, music's just getting going, getting into their busy season now. They've had three concerts so far. I think Mr. Reitz was at one of them last night, and there was one the night. Our theater department, we've got two new directors in our theater department, Dan and Colin Peruco. I went to the performances last weekend. Awesome. And attendance was very high. We're looking forward to a great spring play and Shakespeare, Spring Musical and Shakespeare from them. And then our activities, such as speech and debate, robotics, Science Olympiad, math team, those are all, they're all just all getting going right now, and don't really start their competitions and performances now until the winter. And so tonight, I've got all athletes with us tonight, student athletes, and we'll bring more of the activities here in the winter. Of our eight Minnesota State High School League Fall Sports, six of them competed in the state tournament this year, and I've got leaders from four of those teams here tonight.
Hi, I'm Avery Dove.
I'm Monica Dox, and we're on the girls' tennis team. We started off this year really strong, winning the important matches. And we did well enough in our regular season to be seeded third at state. And then we beat Stillwater in the section final five-two to make it to the state tournament.
At state, we were able to focus and work hard and placed fourth overall for the team. Two of our doubles teams made it to state in individuals, and Rory and Reese Wallstran won the state tournament in doubles. Huge thanks to our amazing coaches, Scott Sunstrom and Becky Johnson, for making it possible.
Great.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Gear. I'm a captain for the boys' cross-country team at Moundsview. This year, we were able to finish first in conference sections, and then we finished fourth at state. We had a new coaching lead this year. We had only Coach Wentworth was our head coach, and last year, he was co-coaches with Coach Thompson and Coach Wentworth, well, and himself. But he did really good to lead us to, like, a great finish at state and just a great job in championship season.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I am Chloe Chan.
I'm Melina Brodean, and we are the Moundsview Girls Cross Country Captains.
And we started off our year with a campout we usually do as a tradition in Moundsview Girls Cross Country, to bring all the young and the, like, olds, to celebrate, like, how much we love racing. And we couldn't do it without our amazing coaches and their support.
Um, moving on to championship season, at the conference meet, we got second overall, and we had the fastest team record in history, which was a great feat. At sections, we won the meet, securing our spot at state, and then went on to get sixth. Overall, it was an amazing season, and the dedication of our team is one that will not be matched.
Awesome.
I'm Joey Muehlstein.
Jacob Sampson.
I'm Jonah Wilford.
And I'm Joe Costanlich. And some of the season highlights we had this year was being the second team in school history to win the section and conference title in the same year, as well as having the number-two defense in the state and the number-five offense in the state. And what was recently announced is we were the number-three team in the entire state for Team GPA. So we reached the gold standard.
Nice.
And we had a very high GPA this year.
Great.
Nice.
Awesome. Well, congratulations to everyone on their seasons. Very exciting. We always love this night for you all to be here. So for those that are seniors, if you have any plans after graduation, we'd love to hear what you're thinking. Feel free to share, or you don't need to, but we always like to hear what's going on.
Hi, so I hope to go to college, and I'd like to go to med school. I want to practice medicine, and yeah.
Awesome. Great.
I... I hope to go to college as well, and hopefully end up in law school.
I would also like to go to college. I would like to study finance and play tennis in college as well.
I hope to go to pre-med at the University of Minnesota.
Go Gophers.
Um, I plan to study pre-medicine as well and in college, and hopefully run track.
I plan to do political science, maybe at the University of Minnesota.
I am hoping to study business at the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill.
I plan to study engineering and wrestle in college.
I'm going to Winona State to play football, and still trying to figure out what I'm going to study.
Going to play football somewhere, unsure yet, and I'm studying engineering.
Nice. Well, congratulations. Have a wonderful school year, and good luck to all of you. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
You're free to stick around, if you want, you know, hang out, but don't feel obligated.
Don't feel obligated.
Don't feel like you have to. And thanks, Mr. Fink and Mr. Galvin for being here.
Thank you.
And Mr. Reitz, I think he's off already somewhere, so. Okay, we will move on to item two dot four announcements. Shawna, could you please read the gifts?
Yes, so there were nine gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $12,190. And there were ten gifts received for the Ralph Reader Food Shelf this period for a total of $11,198.51. It is recommended the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great. Thanks, Shawna. Upcoming meetings, our next work session is Thursday, December fifth at 5:00 PM. And our next regular meeting of the school board will be on Tuesday, December tenth at 7:00 PM. So both here at the district center. Next, we'll move to Agenda Item two dot five, Superintendent's Report.
Great. Thank you. I actually have several things this evening. I'm going to start with school recognition. Last week, I had the opportunity to travel to Washington, DC, with Principal Molly Hollahan and Chippewa Middle School teacher Boyd Uyghur to receive a 2024 National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Award. They have a photo. So there we are in DC, receiving that award from the U.S. Department of Education. It was really a wonderful event. We're very honored to be able to represent everyone who's responsible for Chippewa earning that award over the years. On behalf of Moundsview Public Schools, Chippewa is actually the third school in, in Moundsview Public Schools in our district to earn this honor. Irondale High School was named a Blue Ribbon School in 1993, and Pike Lake Elementary recognized with that distinction in 1986. So more information about the award specifically for Chippewa this year is going to be available in the next edition of School Talk, which is on its way to your mailboxes in the next week. So look out for that coming very soon. I also want to recognize our Community Education Department. They recently won an award from the Minnesota Community Education Association for their Community Senior Lunch Program. Now, that is a joint initiative with the City of New Brighton. It fosters social-emotional connections with adults aged 55 and over. I've personally had the opportunity to attend and participate. It is just an absolutely outstanding event, and I'm thrilled that they were able to be recognized and receive that Regional Project Award. So congratulations to everyone from both Moundsview as well as the City of New Brighton on that. Some additional student recognition, we've heard a lot of that this evening, but there's more. Moundsview High School newspaper, The Viewer, won the All-State Silver Award at the High School Press Association's Annual Convention this fall. The newspaper and website also won Best in Show Awards. And Moundsview High School senior Isaac Si directed a film called Men of Character, which was actually chosen to screen at the Twin Cities Film Festival in October. The film follows the members of the Moundsview Boys Track and Field Team as they strive to win the state championship. So congratulations specifically to Isaac and to all of our very talented students. And finally, I just wanted to provide an update on some community engagement. As many know, the school board this year asked the community to provide feedback regarding student use of cell phones in our schools. Nearly 4,000 people have shared their thoughts in an online survey, and about 200 people attended two different community conversations that were held by the district. Both the survey results and the themes of those community conversations are going to be shared in the upcoming weeks. That feedback is also going to be shared with an advisory committee that includes parents, students, and staff for their review. That committee is actually responsible for providing recommendations to the school board at an upcoming meeting that will ultimately be used by the board to inform the creation of the district cellphone policy. And if anybody's interested in learning more about that, you can certainly find that information on our website, www.mvpschools.org/cellphones. With that, I'll end my report.
Great. Thanks, Superintendent Lennox. We will now move on to item three dot zero, approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item four dot one, Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Audit Report. And we'd like to welcome up Paula Steele, Director of Finance, Bernice Humnick, Executive Director of Business Services, and Jackie Heagle from the Audit for and Jackie Heagle from the Audit for Malloy Montag Karnowski Radosivit.
MMKR.
MMKR. Yeah, whatever the. Perfect. So we're excited for you to be here and we're excited to hear about the audit report.
All right, well, good evening and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jackie Heagle and I'm a partner with MMKR here to present the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2024. You should have received in your packets several documents, four items, the annual comprehensive financial report. There is a special purpose report which summarizes the audit opinions, a corrective action plan, which is required when you have a federal audit. We'll get to that. You don't have any findings, but you're still required to submit that to the Department of Education and to the federal government. And then the management report, which is our MMKR document that summarizes the results of the audit. And that's what I'll be speaking through tonight, through my PowerPoint presentation. One item I did just want to comment on briefly before I get into my presentation is just the timing of the audit results. In recent years, as many of you are probably aware, there's been a lot of different audit standards, a lot of federal funding. So I know your finance team has worked really hard in order to get everything wrapped up timely in order for us to be at the November meeting this year and presenting the audit results, so. With that, I'll move into the presentation. This first slide here just kind of summarizes my role as an auditor. As an auditor, I'm here to issue an opinion on the district's audit, that is, that annual comprehensive financial report. Your district does receive more than $750,000 in federal funding. That is the level of funding that triggers what's called a single audit. So there's a separate audit of the federal awards of the district. That is increasing over the next couple of years here to a million dollars, but you'll still fall within those guidelines even moving forward with the changes in the standard. As part of the audit, we also review the internal controls and compliance over the financial statement audit with that federal single audit. And then also with Minnesota state laws and regulations. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases what's known as the Legal Compliance Manual. And those are the specific statutes that as auditors we're required to test for. So we're not testing all of them, but they do change that manual from year to year. To summarize the audit results over the district financial audit, I issued an unmodified or clean opinions on those basic financial statements. You will notice if you're looking at the audit opinion that once again, there was some new GASB guidance that had to be implemented in the current year. It's a group asset standard. I think this is probably the third year of new GASB guidance that had to be implemented. So with this new guidance, local governments are now required to capitalize groups of similar assets if it's significant. In the past, you would individually look at those assets. So a good example for school districts is you're purchasing technology products, Chromebooks, computers. In the past, if those assets individually were less than the district's capitalization policy, you didn't include those in your financial report as a capital asset. Now, when you're purchasing them, you're purchasing them in bulk. If it's significant to your district, you are required to now include those as part of the audit process. So that was a change in the current year. You were required to look back a couple of years in order to implement that standard. For the audit opinions over the internal control and compliance with the financial audit, I had no findings to report there, both in the internal control and in the compliance area. For the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit, had no instances of non-compliance to report with state laws and regulations. And for the single audit of federal awards, we issued all clean opinions there, a clean opinion on that schedule of expenditure of federal awards and no material weaknesses or instances of non-compliance in our testing there. This year, we were required to test two programs, so the Child Nutrition Cluster Federal Funding and the Special Education Funding. So overall, all very good audit results, as you can see, no findings to report, all clean opinions. I don't have a slide, but one item I do want to just comment on also as every year as part of the audit, we're required to follow up on any comments that were issued in the prior year audit. So as you might be aware, there was a comment in the prior year audit relating with timely reconciliations and making sure they're being completed monthly. As part of all of our testing this year, those were all being completed timely and monthly. And I do also believe has a big factor in the audit getting wrapped up timely. So continue that process as you're moving forward. Well, the next several slides I'll go through then focus more on the financial results of the audit. This first one here shows the general fund financial position for the past five years, summarizes that cash and investment balance, that unassigned fund balance of the district. Overall, the cash and investment balance at year end was about 80 million, up about 15 million from the prior year. And you're seeing your unassigned fund balance end the year at about 40 million, which was an increase of about 4 million from the prior year. This next slide then summarizes those components of that general fund fund balance. So if you're looking at that 2024 year, you're seeing a year-end total general fund fund balance of about 63 million. And when you break it down, there's the different buckets there, the non-spendable fund balance, the dollars that are restricted and set aside for various purposes. And then you have dollars that are assigned for specific purposes as well as unassigned dollars. The restricted fund balance, about 3.8 million. Most of that is set aside in dollars that are restricted for operating capital. The assigned fund balance, there are several items that are set aside there in assigned. One is subsequent year budget deficit. So you've already approved a budget for 2025 to spend down. You're required to assign that in this audit report. You also have some dollars set aside for some future site improvements as well as some health insurance cost increases. And that leaves the 40.5 million in that unassigned bucket at year end, which is approximately about 2.6 months of operations. So that is in line with the district's fund balance policy at June 30th, 2024. This slide here just summarizes the adjusted ADM and pupil units served by the district. Obviously, the ADM that the district uses to close out their financial report is a big driver into some of your education, general education funding. So for the year end 2024, the district closed with an estimate of 11,215. That is a decrease of about 187 from the prior year. Next two slides I'll go through comment specifically on general fund revenues and expenditures. The total general fund revenues for the district were about 192 million. There are about 4 million over the final budget. A couple of the budget areas you're seeing variances. The state sources came in over budget mainly just due to more special education funding than was anticipated. You also saw that other local sources coming in over budget. And that was due to the investment earnings through the year, not knowing the unknowns of the market performance and that coming in better than anticipated. Overall, looking current year to prior year, comparing those general fund revenues, the district increased about 8.6 million. Most of that was in that state sources category. You're seeing increases in that general education funding formula allowance as well as some special education funding. You did see a slight decrease in your federal funding this year. A lot of that is due to the pandemic grants ending as you continue to move forward here. Similar slide just showing the general fund expenditures, current year, prior year, as well as a budget. Overall, general fund expenditures ended the year about 10 million under budget. Most of that was in salaries and budget, salaries and benefit related costs just due to some conservative budgeting with unknown settlements at the time. You also saw your purchase services coming in under budget, mainly in utilities and repair and maintenance costs. And then overall, the general fund expenditures did increase about 10.5 million from the prior year. All of that was mainly in salaries and benefits. You saw that area, your personnel costs go up about 9 million just due to contractual wage increases. This next graph here then summarizes what we consider the other governmental funds of the district. So that's specifically your food service special revenue fund as well as your community service special revenue fund. That food service fund ended the year with an increase in fund balance of about 1.8 million. You did see your revenues were over budget, mainly in state sources and federal sources. And then expenditures were slightly under budget. The one thing if you're comparing current year to prior year, in the food service area, there was that change in programming. So with the universal free meals, the state is now paying for meals that aren't funded by the federal government. So if you're looking at your state sources, you're seeing a significant increase in that charges for services, a decrease. In the community service special revenue fund, you saw an increase in fund balance of about 1.4 million compared to a balanced budget. Most of that was just due to increased programming in the current year. But ended the year with a solid fund balance of about 5.7 million. And then the last slide I have here, this summarizes the district-wide statement of net positions. So this is the full accrual financial statements is what we call it. It's when you take all your different funds that the district have and you roll it all together to present one snapshot. When you look at the statement of net position, it includes any capital asset activity of the district as well as any long-term liabilities, any bonds, any pension activity that the district has. The top portion of this table shows it by those fund balances of the governmental funds, all the various adjustments to get to that net position. And then the bottom portion shows it by the different, the components of net position. So overall snapshot, looking at that statement of net position, you're seeing an increase of about 27.6 million. Most of that is in that unrestricted fund balance or unrestricted net position, I should say, that bottom line. If you correlate that to the top portion, you're seeing your pension adjustments. That just correlates with those PERA and TRA. As local governments, you have to put the unfunded portion, the Mounds View's unfunded portion on your district financial statements. And that can swing from year to year, you know, based on the funding of the plans. So that is consistent with what you're seeing at all the other local governments as well. Your positive operations and your general fund is also contributing to that increase in that unrestricted. And then the restricted fund balance that you're seeing go up about 10 million, that's due to the various components that are already restricted, like your operating capital dollars, various capital dollars that are set aside, the positive increases in both your food service and your community service special revenue funds. So with that, I can open it up if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for Jackie? We actually talked about this in length at the work session last Thursday. Bernice was so kind to give us a report update, so we were able to ask our questions there. But if anyone has any questions since we have Jackie, this is your time, so. All right, so we do have action tonight, right Bernice?
Correct.
So I believe it is recommended that the board accept the audit report as represented. And so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. The audit report has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Jackie, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. And Bernice and team, we so appreciate you. I know that you all worked very hard to get this done, as Jackie mentioned, to have it ready for November. So thank you. We appreciate all of your hard work, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are going to move on to item four dot two, 2024-25 quarterly budget report. And so we're going to keep Bernice up here with us.
Good evening. This is routine business. This quarterly report is part of our standard financial updates to keep the school board informed on fiscal health. The overview provides a summary of revenue and expenditures by fund. The purpose ensures transparency and monitors progress against the budget for the fiscal year. Any question?
Any questions?
Good work. No questions, I just have a comment. I'm going to echo a little bit what you. This work that Bernice is presenting is why the audit is what the audit is and behind the scenes, all the stuff that goes on. So no adjustments, no corrections, they're doing great work. So thank you to Bernice and thank you to the whole finance team.
Yeah, and I'll second that. There's our old friend Sandra Westerman used to say, these things just don't happen by accident. It's a lot of hard work. I don't think folks know with the COVID funding and the federal funding and the requirements that we had to go through the last four years, the stress and on the whole system that we had. But as usual, we come out great because of our planning, hard work, and Bernice and her department's professionalism. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to keep Bernice up here again. Bernice has got a busy evening. So we have item four dot three, the 2025-2026 non-resident enrollment options.
We're here this evening to discuss the 25-26 open enrollment. Open enrollment is a state program which allows families to have their child attend a public school district other than the district in which they reside. Each year, in compliance with state statute, the district reviews student enrollment along with the building capacity and decides whether to open or limit enrollment to families living outside the district boundaries. This year, we believe the district will have the capacity within some of our schools and/or grade levels to offer open enrollment to non-resident students for the 25-26 school year. Detailed information about specific grade levels, schools, and/or programs where non-resident student enrollment will be available as well as the process for selection will be made available on the public district website. Final acceptance of enrollment applications will be limited to specific grades, schools, and/or programs where non-resident student enrollment will remain within the board-approved ranges. This evening, we are asking for the board to approve open enrollment for 25-26, specifically in the areas of K through five.
Any questions for Bernice? All right, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The attached resolution has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Bernice.
Thank you.
So five dot one, we have a lot of people here to give us an update on the district operational plan goal, early childhood kindergarten outreach efforts. So Colin, I will turn it over to you and you can introduce your crew there.
As my team's getting set here, yeah, thank you. We're happy to be here, we're back, if you remember. Our goal is to develop a coordinated outreach plan that builds connections and promotes programs with our early childhood to kindergarten families. Now, this is the second year of our goal. The recommendation from our enrollment study was to set a goal of 800 students for our incoming kindergarten classes, which would provide us with slow, steady growth. And year two, like I said, year two of this goal focuses on execution and implementing the plan. So it really is a team effort and this is the team. We've got Todd Durand at Pike Lake. We've got Barb Shakenmeyer with Early Childhood. We've got Ryan Lang at Snail Lake, Megan McKean in Public Relations, and Carl Brown, Community Education. So you're going to hear from all of us tonight and actually see the stuff that we've been working on.
I think I'm starting off.
Yes.
So part of this goal is taking a closer look at our birth records. We've been working with Ramsey County Department of Health and looking at our birth records for a long time to know when we have children born in our district. One of the pieces we're doing for this goal, and it's going to help us in a lot of ways for the years to come, is to separate students within different milestones of their birthdays. So blocks of time for their first, second birthday, also when they're turning three. So we have different pieces that we'll talk about, some of the things that will happen during that time. But it's an expansion of how we're using birth records to inform some of the work we do. Some of the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Some of the community outreach that we have been talking about is, you can see on the screen, going to farmers markets, having a presence there, in our community fairs and city festivals, some events that early childhood hosts like Touch a Truck, Valentine's Day Dance, and they'll also trunk retreats and different events in the community.
Okay, this is the moment you've all been waiting for. And we're very, very excited to show you what we've been working on.
We've tried to be patient.
Yes, yes, and you have been. Thank you for being very patient with us.
I never said I was patient.
They're, yes, they're substantial. So when a child is born in our district, as we learn from birth records, within the first zero to three months, they will receive a packet in the mail that has a couple of documents. One is kind of a handle that says, "Welcome baby," that says, "Congratulations on the birth of your child." And this is for the parent. Here are some resources that we're here to help you. You know, our parent, our ECFE, our family, programs for our parenting classes. And then the star of the show, pun intended, is the onesie that says, "Future superstar." Future Mounds View Public School superstar. Yes, and so this is of course meant to start those connections. Yes, and so this is of course meant to start those connections early with the new parents, start the connections with the district early. And so that is from, you know, within the zero to three month range of when the child is born. And then, again, and then when the child turns one, they'll hear from us again. And this is kind of the time that we will want to introduce them to what their kindergarten center will be. So they'll get a first birthday card from either Shelley the Snail or Paz the Panther. And they'll also get a book with a little sticker on the back that says, you know, this book belongs to, and then a little space for them to write their name, future. There are actually three different kinds of stickers. One is the district star, and then one has Shelley the Snail on it, and one has Paz the Panther. And it will be, you know, kind of based on where they live in the district, to kind of help them identify where they'll be going to school. You know, and then they'll open up the birthday card, they'll get a birthday message, and then on the back, it has early childhood resources for them as well, and an option to connect with us on our social media channels. And this book, I have hard evidence, my daughter got this for her first birthday and was entranced by it. So this book actually works. And then these books, I actually will, I'll put a note in that the foundation is actually helping us pay for these books, so I would like to thank the foundation, because you'll see the other books that they're helping us pay for as well. So then they'll hear from us again when the child turns two, and they'll get another birthday card from Paz and Shelley. Kind of the same, same idea here, kind of just, you know, continuing that connection with their future school. And they'll get another book from us, this time on kindness. So kind of the same idea there. And then when they turn three, we kind of move away from, from birthday gifts and things like that, and we move into information about screening. So we'll send them, around their third birthday, we'll send them a postcard to remind them to get screened. And I'll let Barb talk more about this, but this is kind of the introduction about screening. And then also, we don't have a sample of it here, but we'll send them a postcard to register for preschool as well. And that will be in December, because preschool registration always starts in January, but we don't have a, those aren't ready yet, so we don't have a sample of those. But I'll let Barb talk about, well, I'll talk about, first I'll talk about what families will get at screening, and then Barb can talk about what happens at screening. So when a child and their caregiver comes in to get screened, which could be anytime between the ages of three and five, they'll get screened and then they'll be able to choose, there'll be kind of a shelf there, and they'll be able to choose between a couple of different books off a shelf. And then the caregiver will get a little tote bag, so they can go to the park, and then they'll be with the other parents at the park. Branding, MVPschools.org/earlylearning. And the child will also get a little water bottle. And so maybe our school's lost and found, and the Shoreview, we center lost and found can become a branding center for us as well. And what I wanted to note about this as well is we, this is our opportunity to really connect with families who speak different languages in our district. It's really hard for us with the birth records, for us to know what languages families are speaking in their homes from that. And so when family, when kids are coming in to getting screened, they'll have the option to pick a book in English, we'll have some English options, and then we'll have books in Spanish, Somali, and Hmong as well, that they'll be able to. So we're hoping to reach some families that don't speak English in the home as well that way, to make sure that we're being inclusive in that way as well, so. So we'll let Barb talk a little bit about what will happen at screening.
So screening, they'll come on in, they enter into, this is our screening room that they come into. Generally speaking, they separate from their parents for this, and we look at all areas of developments. We look at large motor skills, we look at some academic skills, we look at language, how they're developing. Like Megan said, we do have families that are coming in that English is not their first language, and they are screened in their home language. So we have interpreters that come out and help support that process. It's fun for me to listen to Megan, that she's learned a lot about early childhood and screening, so that's really exciting for me, just to be able to share all that knowledge. And it's an exciting time of life for families, to bring their child in for the first time to school and, and learn a little bit about our programming. So one of the things that we are also working on is loading our screening data into a map and a system so that we're able to see, is the outreach that we're doing working? And be able to see if they got information about screening, are they coming in? And if not, what are other types of outreach that we need to be considering to send to families, so that we do get them in early? Our sweet spot is about three and a half years old, is really when we want them coming in to see us, just to do a quick check on development, hearing, eyes, and all the other areas. So we really want, we want to see families early and get them connected to the school district as well.
And something else too to note, as Barb has said, that sometimes families who come in to get screened don't necessarily live in our attendance area, which I believe to be a positive, because then we might be connecting them to enroll in our district, when they maybe wouldn't have known that we were an option for them before. So I think that's also a positive, maybe marketing opportunity for us, that maybe they wouldn't have known about us as an option before. And so then when they're done being screened, there is just this kind of poster by the, by the shelf with the books that say, you know, kind of a little bit about the foundation's mission for the books. And then when they turn four, we will send them a postcard for, sign up for pre-K, so. And it's kind of moving into getting them to sign up for pre-K, and then kind of funneling them into our kindergarten program, which we've got Todd and Ryan to talk about.
Yeah, I think part of it is the, you can see the early childhood catalog being aligned with registration dates, so some of that is really important. We've been working together to make sure that early childhood outreach and kindergarten outreach is aligned and partnership, because we're really serving the same families in our community. And then some work around a kindergarten checklist, just not an entrance checklist, but just more like, this is what kids are working on, this is what, more of like what you would expect at this age, just taking away the assumption that families know exactly what would be age expected at particular phases and stages of development. And then also in that building in, here's how you connect with your kindergarten center again, so that all the time, we're thinking about that next step, because we want families to be thinking about it before they take that step as a family.
The kindergarten checklist, I've seen the draft, and it's really well done. Colin and Megan are phenomenal when it comes to learning about the programming that we're doing, and they've been listening to us through this entire process to figure out, what are the, what are the times, when is it important for us to reach out to families and get them the information that's necessary? Because we hear, in the programming that we do, we hear the same questions over and over and over again, at the same times of year. And so we're trying to get like, just a step in front of it, and the kindergarten checklist is very comprehensive, and it's really well done, the draft is pretty impressive. We also have a lot of other activities, so we have, and ways that families can get connected. So we have day-in-the-life video, which I think we're going to see again in a little bit. In-person tours at our schools through different events, through kindergarten kickoff events, and also if parents are interested, they can call our front offices or call us directly, any one of the three of us to set up tours and learn about programming face-to-face. We've got, like I said, the 360 tours on our websites. We also, both of the kindergarten centers host popsicles on the playground or popsicles with the principal in the summer for incoming kindergarteners. So families have a chance to just get familiar with the playground and meet other, most importantly, I mean, the playgrounds, for the kindergartner, that's what they want. The incoming kindergartner wants to see the playground, that's the big attraction. For parents, it's a great chance for them to connect with one another and meet other people, like, "Oh, you're in the neighborhood, I've seen you before, it's nice to know our kids are going to be in the same, in the same school, it's an amazing event, and we have great attendance for those." And then, I guess I did mention the kindergarten kickoff, and we're going to add a few things, like a signing day booth, sort of like you see when kids are, like all the high schoolers that were talking about where they're going earlier in this meeting. We'll have an opportunity for like a photo op for kids with a backdrop, just sort of like, "I'm signing up for kindergarten," we've got the oversized pencils, we've got the whole thing, it's going to be great.
Yep, okay, so next is a video that we put together called "The Day in, Day in the Life of a Kindergartner." So we made one for both Snail Lake and Pike Lake, kind of because for a parent or maybe a nervous kindergartner, they don't really know what, what it would be like, like what is kindergarten going to be like, especially a whole day, right? If they're maybe coming from daycare or a half-day of preschool, or maybe being at home with their parent. So, we'll play this.
We'd like to thank, like, all the people involved in making those videos, it took a lot of work, and especially Superintendent Chris Lennox for wearing the mascot outfits He enjoyed that.
Thought he looked familiar.
So very quickly, the last thing before we open it up for questions is, some, you might remember this from the last time we presented to you, is earlier this year, we did, we started the Make the Best Art Possible digital marketing campaign, that kind of strategically targeted, targeted families with kindergarten-ready students that reside in the district and neighboring communities. It was kind of part of our open enrollment campaign. And so we are going to continue that this year. It was quite successful last year, we kind of hit, you know, we worked with a advertising agency, and we kind of hit every benchmark that they said made for a successful advertising campaign. So we're going to continue that again this year with social media ads, digital display ads, you know, on websites as you're browsing online, and then targeted email marketing as well. And then a parallel digital campaign will also be conducted to invite families for open enrollment, kind of as I said before. So look out for that as well. I always get excited when I see those ads on social media and online as well, so. Yeah, so thank you for letting us share with you. Does anybody have any questions?
I want to know the chances of getting a "Hey, you're 40-something" card from Paz the Panther.
We'll have our people call your people.
I do have an actual question. So you did talk about birth records from Ramsey County. What if a family adopts a child or doesn't give birth to a child? Do we get those records somehow?
I don't think we currently do. It's an area, I think, that we've been trying to look at, different ways we can have this. The birth records are a great way of people that are initially in our district, but beyond that, I think any of these methods are trying to make those connection points, those outreach events of giving people the opportunity to connect with us, you know, sign up for different things and have that record, because once we have their information, we can continue staying connected with them as their child gets older. But that is definitely an area we'd love to get more information on.
And when we're starting to, the process for enrolling for the next school year for kindergarten, I know a lot of the paperwork that we send home with families is, if you have neighbors or friends that are in the area and have a kindergartner, please let them know about these events, just in case they have moved in, because we may not know. So word of mouth has been very beneficial. I know we enrolled a family last year during the Popsicles on the Playground event. So that was, it does make a difference, that people are connecting with one another.
Great work, super fun stuff. I was at the Moundsy Schools Education Foundation, Rock the Schoolhouse event on Saturday night, and it was great to see the books displayed, and so many of the people there are really excited about this initiative too. So I love that partnering opportunity to get, you know, some funding from a source within the district, but also just more word of mouth from a lot of different people in the district. So great opportunity for partnership there.
Great work. I feel like you guys have been giving us updates for quite a while on this initiative, and so it's just really exciting to see all of the materials come together, and I appreciate you guys taking the feedback. I know, you know, we talked a lot about making sure that we, we had some different touch points that, and that all, in all those different touch points, we were very inclusive, and each member of our community felt like they belonged. So I really appreciate you guys taking that to heart and kind of having that weave throughout this whole, whole campaign. So appreciate all the great work that you guys did putting this together. I know it was a lot of work, and just very, very well done, so thank you.
Love the video.
It was great.
Love the video.
And the idea for the video came from the principals. They'd been asking me for a while, they, I mean, they literally had the idea, day-in-the-life. And I think maybe a way to summarize this too is to say, thank you for your feedback here. It's, it's a work in progress, so it's, it's a little bit of plug and play this year, because this is the first time we're doing most of this stuff, but we're going to continue to meet and evaluate what worked, what didn't, where are more opportunities. So it may not necessarily be a formal DOB goal, year three, four, or five, the work will become standard work.
Well, thank you for being here tonight and for all the updates. Great work. All right, at this time, we'll move on to item 5.2, AMSD update. Jim?
Thank you, Chair. AMSD is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, which Moundsy has been a part of for about 30 years. So we work on legislative initiatives and government interactions. We have had a couple meetings recently, and both of them very early, I might add. And we focused on a couple things. One is we had a speaker named Tiki Brown, who is the new commissioner of the Department of Children, Youth, and Family. They will be coordinating with HHS, education, and things, and, and a lot of departments to align and coordinate students, and to make sure they don't fall through the cracks on social services, education, that type of thing. So it's a pretty lofty goal, but it's, they're focusing on a lot of innovative things to try to coordinate a lot of activities. So I wish them well, it seems like a pretty big task. The other thing that we have been working on is a legislative platform. We, you know, we're waiting for the elections, and so we'll finally, we have most things pretty much set up, we'll vote on that on our meeting on December 6th, and then go to legislature and make some asks for public education. So we also discussed elections, the legislature couldn't be closer. There are 67 Democrats in the House, there are 67 Republicans in the House, there are 34 Democrats in the Senate, and 33 Republicans. So for things to get done, people will have to cooperate, get along. A little bit interesting on the local front, AMSD follows school referendums in the state, and of the 69 in the state this year, only 29 passed for school funding. So just a note on that. So thank you, Chair, and I'll be there December 6th, so. So thank you, Chair, and I'll be there December 6th, so.
Thank you, Jim. Shauna, 916 update?
Yep, so 916 is an intermediate school district, one of four intermediate school districts in the state of Minnesota, that we are a member of that district. It's made up of, I think, 10 member districts. They provide us with some special education services and some career and technical education opportunities for our students. So we met last Wednesday. It was a fairly routine meeting. We updated a few school board policies, the textbook and instructional material policy, student attendance policy, the student nondiscrimination policy, and the testing accommodations, modifications, and exemptions policy. And then we recognized a retirement of one of our education assistants. He had worked for 916 for 40 years. He started in 1984, and was only retiring because of some health issues that recently arose, but had been an educational assistant for 40 years and loved every minute of it. So it was great. He was there with his wife, and we were able to celebrate his 40 years, which was fantastic. So we will meet again the beginning of December.
Great. Thank you, Shauna. Next item is 6 dot 1, School Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to update?
Well, I would just like to add, I know Heidi mentioned it earlier, but I was also able to attend the Rock the Schoolhouse event on Saturday, and just had a really great time. It's the kind of annual event for Moundsview Schools Education Foundation, which I've had the pleasure of getting to know even more this year, being the board member, who's the ex officio board member who gets to attend those meetings. And so I've learned a lot about the organization and just the great work that it does for our students and for our district. And it was great to network and just, you know, see so many great community members and donors and people that really feel passionate about giving to our, our great district. So I just wanted to give a quick special shout out, because I know Shelley Difley and Mindy Amber really spent a lot of time planning that event. I mean, it is like a year's worth of planning that goes into making that a really great event for the community. And I also want to give a quick shout out to Amanda Duffy, the Director of, of the organization, and Amanda DePhillips, the President, because they, again, did a great job hosting, and they were so fun. They were the emcees for the night. So it was a great, great event. I encourage those of you who want to learn more about the foundation to go online and, and check them out, but also put it on your calendars for next year, because there will be another Rock the Schoolhouse event next November, and put it on your calendar early. So, great event.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I want to tag team on Chris's report earlier. I was able to attend both of the cell phone intentional, social interaction meetings over the last two weeks, and just thank the public for, for giving us their feedback, taking the time to complete the surveys, the parents, the staff who have, the students who have, and for the 200 people who came to those two events, really committed to engage in that conversation. It was, both of them were so well facilitated by Marnita's table, just fabulous events. But it was, it was great to see people really being heard. We had lots of people, lots of our translators were really busy at both events. And at the second event, we had a little girl ask for the microphone at the end of the night, and she thanked everyone for inviting her and for listening to her, and just said she had a great time. These events are three hours, so I would have guessed that she was a elementary school student, and for her to sit still and listen and feel like she was listened to for three hours. I just appreciate so many of the staff members who were there at both events, gave their time, really engaged in the process, and created this opportunity. Thank you Superintendent Lennox for thinking big picture about how we engage the community. And I think people really felt like they had those opportunities and really felt valued. So I appreciate the effort around this.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else?
Well, I had the good fortune of, on a beautiful fall night, heading, going to a Moundsview football game, in which they stopped Prior Lake on the goal line stand to get the, to the state tournament. I had an opportunity to speak to the Bel Air PTA and, and participate in their book fair. This morning, I had the great pleasure of meeting a whole bunch of DECA students from Moundsview who presented their business plans, who had a whole weekend at Camp Enterprise where they worked on business plans. And Ms. Becky Allard from Moundsview brought us there. And I would like to recognize, we have some Girl Scouts in the audience who are going to, I suspect, earn their government badges tonight. So congratulations, and thank you for all your community service. It is wonderful to learn at any age, giving back's a big deal, and keep those cookies coming. So thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, well, thanks, everyone. If there's nothing else to come before the board, we are adjourned.
Thank you.